I'd like to make a motion to enter into an executive session as the discussion may adversely affect the litigation with the intent to return to the City Council at the conclusion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the meeting of June 2nd, 2021 as submitted.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Mello.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. There is an error in item number 16. I addressed it with the city clerk. My answer was no.
Oh, on the vote itself?
Seconded. Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Got it. Anything else on the minutes? Seeing none? Do we need a roll call? Seeing none? All in favor?
Yes.
Roll call.
Bell Trandy?
As amended. The minutes as amended?
Yes.
Burns?
As amended.
Yes.
Figgy?
As amended. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
Flaherty?
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Harris?
Opposed?
Yes.
Counselor Figgy.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into an executive session as the discussion may adversely affect the litigation with the intent to return to the City Council at the conclusion.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean? Seconded.
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
I'd like to call the regular scheduled City Council meeting to order. Communications from the mayor?
Public participation.
I'm sorry, public participation.
I think we have to vote.
My apologies. Public participation. This is the time for the public to address the City Council. Name and address for the city clerk.
Good evening. My name is Carmel Stager, and I live at 60 Wood Road in Westfield. And thank you very much for having us here. We have, I'm the chair of the Friends of Columbia Greenway Rail Trail. And so there are two items that I'm going to use my three minutes for tonight. The first one is just really quick. I did have a motion that I introduced to the city councilors, to our city councillor, Michael Burns, and Bridgette Matthews Kane, Counselors Bell Trandy and Figgy, just in terms of the regional naming of the rail trail that exists from New Haven up to Northampton, that we would like to be part of that umbrella organization. I think I circulated just a description about that. And we would very much like to do it. It's no cost to the city or to our group, but it's just a way to proceed with obtaining and applying for funding and marketing, kind of like a presence with Columbia Greenway Rail Trail along the whole length of the trail. And as Northampton goes east to west, it's really important that we try to be part of that whole coalition. So that was the first thing. The second item I wanted to just go over is the discussion of the Main Street Rail Trail Bridge that was installed in March. And I have tonight with me, I have a couple of our board members from the Friends of Columbia Greenway Rail Trail. I have our development director, Jonathan McHatten, and Paul Kakalies, and they're going to speak as well. But I did just want to allude to a little bit about this whole request for naming the Main Street Bridge, the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. None of those bridges that have been installed in the past year, and with the inclusion of the Elm Street Bridge, which will be refurbished and renovated, none of them would be there if it weren't for the plans that had been in place for at least 12 years to continue the Columbia Greenway Rail Trail from Southwick up to the Espinade. We wouldn't have those bridges. They were taken down years ago. It is really a part of the history of the Columbia Greenway Rail Trail, which started in the 1820s with Irish immigrants coming over and building the canals, and other immigrants coming in and living in the Meadow Street area and kind of building up the canals, and then later the railroads, that that history of that whole bike path is part of what Westfield has in terms of our cultural development and our historical development. There's also a lot of Native American history, that we have signage along the trails, and it's just a really unique part of our bike path and our multi-use trail. Sometimes I say bike path, and I shouldn't. But I want to just mention that I did have contact after we presented at the Properties Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago with Don Wilgus, who's the project manager of the Purple Heart Association. And we had suggestions for him in terms of naming another bridge, and suggestions in terms of other alternatives that that group does not seem to be willing to compromise about. And we really tried to outreach and make ourselves available to work with them. And I, we really tried to outreach and make ourselves available to work with them and it didn't seem as though that was going to move along. So I just wanted to say that we would really like to have the city council be very thoughtful about naming any of the bridges, especially since the rail trail is not even complete. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonathan McHatten, I live at 42 Arnold Street. So I'll just start, I'll say that in college I studied urban planning and community development and, you know, I use those skills in my profession today as well as in my role as the director of the planning and development of the Friends of the Columbia Greenway Rail Trail. And from that perspective, I come to you today to speak about the item regarding naming the Main Street Bridge of the Columbia Greenway. As we all know, the bridge isn't yet complete, there are features that have not yet been installed on the bridge. And not, nor is the central section that the bridge is going to carry in the future. As such, you know, the community at large hasn't yet had the chance to fully experience this bridge in the central section. And we may not really understand yet what this bridge and what the central section means to the community as a whole. So, or what it represents. So in that, you know, due to that reasoning, I feel it's premature to talk about naming a feature that the community really hasn't had a full chance to experience or fully appreciate until it's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Mayor, my name is Paul Kakalies, I'm from Westwood Drive, and I'm a board member at large of the Friends of the Columbia Greenway Rail Trail. I know that Carmel and Jonathan have already talked about several of the components. One of the pieces that, that I want to talk about with this, conversations that we've had since the June 2nd council meeting and the June 7th Properties Commission meeting, is that there have been conversations back and forth between Mr. Wilgus and Carmel. And as she mentioned, we have offered to support in front of city council, the naming of other structures that would be possibly more appropriate to the Purple Heart Trail. For example, the current Greenway Bridge over Main Street is not part of the Purple Heart Trail, yet I understand the latest proposal actually calls it the Purple Heart Trail Bridge. And that's according to purpleheart.org, which is their webpage that shows them out. What might be more appropriate would be the Elm Street Bridge, which actually runs underneath, runs on top of the existing Purple Heart Trail. We've offered the signage, which I believe council members have all seen the latest donation that the Friends Group made to the city of educational and informational signage on the trail. They are not interested in that, nor are they interested in any other bridge other than Main Street. We have tried to give suggestions in the June 7th meeting. We offered to support an effort to actually name the southbound Route 10202 Great River Bridge, which happens to run on the Purple Heart Trail. We understand that's a state bridge, but we offered to Mr. Wilgus the opportunity that we would actually work in conjunction with his group, along with Representative Peace and Senator Veles, in order to get that bridge currently unnamed, name it the Purple Heart Trail Bridge. We thought that that would be a much better visibility point because there's much higher traffic there with three lanes. The height and the speed limit are the same on that bridge as they are underneath Main Street, so we would think the visibility would be pretty similar. And we haven't heard back, back from that situation yet. The other opportunity we presented is something that's pretty near and dear to my heart because we work pretty closely with the other community groups in town. And one of them is Artworks Westfield. We really like what they've done with the murals and we've seen how much excitement the Hedges mural built and also the one down by the river, by the way, open, I painted on both of those, so I'm pretty happy about that. If you ever see TL, TL is my color. And in that situation, there is a back of a DPW building that actually fronts the Greenway toward the northern end, up by the railroad bridge. And the reason why, I understand that's on the rail trail and Mr. Wilgus isn't interested in structures on the rail trail, but that building is clearly visible from the existing Purple Heart Trail as you cross the 10202 Bridge. We think that would be an excellent place for a mural, especially one that could be educational, informative, and certainly bring greater awareness of the situation with the Purple Heart Trail and the Purple Heart Medal recipients. We've already talked to Artworks, Artworks is on board with that, we think that would be a great idea. We have not yet talked with the Warrior Art Room, but we would think that groups together, Purple Heart Trail Organization, Friends of Columbia Greenway, Artworks Westfield, and also the Warrior Art Room, we think that would be a really good job of building together rather than making a unilateral decision. And I would like to add finally, I'm sure you've all seen this because this has been up on the city's webpage for now two years, this is the, the bridge they're talking about. The signage you see, and if you can't see, I apologize, this is as good as I can do in a couple hours on this, but this is up on the city's webpage. You can see the signage on this, does not leave a lot of extra space when you have the sign that says Westfield with the Westfield crest with the sign that says Columbia Greenway on it. We understand the interest and we are certainly not opposed to having structures named for the Purple Heart Trail Organization, but we are curious why this bridge and now, especially after this, there have been public hearings now going on three and a half years for this specific structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public that wishes to address the council?
Good evening, Tim Matthews, 81 Court Street. I'm speaking tonight also on the rail trail bridge, I didn't realize they were going to be here. And I didn't think it was going to be on the agenda, but I wanted to provide input while I was available. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen of Westfield, not as a Marine Corps officer, and my views don't represent the Marine Corps, the United States Naval Service. However, my military service has informed my thinking on this issue. I come here as an OIFOEF veteran with multiple deployments. I have friends who were killed and subordinates who were maimed in both conflicts. However, I'm coming here tonight to advocate against naming the Main Street Bridge a Purple Heart Trail Bridge. While I applaud Mr. Wilgus and his team's efforts to raise awareness around veterans' issues, this is not the place. Multiple venues throughout the city remember and celebrate veterans, including Stanley Park, Parker Park, and of course the Purple Trail, Purple Heart Trail itself. Westfield and its veterans advocates are to be commended, we do a good job in our town. However, not every bridge, corner, or park needs to be a tribute to the military, nor should they be. The Main Street Bridge and the rail trail have been in process for 12 years and we've seen the things on the city website. And the naming proposal, this most recent naming proposal was only put forward once the bridge was nearing completion. For years drafts have been circulated and the vision has been clearly identified. Now's not the time to shift from a well-established, prior-approved, well-thought-out process. Lastly, as a veteran, not everything needs to be militarized and the military need not be continually deified. A hyper-focus on bumper stickers, bridges, and T-shirts, our visual representations of support, don't provide the impactful support that's needed. Hyper-focus on visual displays actually increases the division between civilians and the military, weakening civil-military relations. It promotes superficial action when more impactful work can be done. Now I know many of you have served in the military yourselves, you have family members, relatives, and of course you all have constituents in the military. You may be tempted to vote for the name change as a sign of support for the military. Resist this temptation. As I said earlier, Westfield has already shown its support. I would encourage more actionable types of support, such as funding the Veteran Service Officer or other things like that, if you want to provide additional support. A vote against name, a vote against naming the bridge the Purple Heart Trail Bridge is not a vote against the military. It's a thoughtful vote for the development of the city as a whole. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thanks. Anybody else from the audience that wishes to address the council? Before I open up the councils, I know there's some, any correspondence, letters, emails that wish to be read into the record for public participation? I know we're kind of still transitioning over from Zoom, so. Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I received an email from Jane Oxen from the Westfield Taxpayers Association. It is six single-spaced pages, so even I can't read it in three minutes, but there were some points that I thought that some councillors here would definitely want to hear. One of which is that from the statistical reports, there was a 9.9% increase in the finished water production between 2019 and 2020. In that same time, when the new meters were installed, they realized a 29.8% increase in billings that should roughly equate to about $1 million annually. This is because the meter is catching more water, right? And when Taiyuan Ban did the analysis that they brought to the Water Commission, they didn't have that data because it wasn't finished yet. So they only went up to 2019. And so the point of the email is that they, they would like us to take a look at this and the information that they have compiled, they'd like to come in and speak to the Natural Resources Committee meeting about it. And so I ask that the letter be put on file and moved this item into Natural Resources. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Counselor Morganelli?
All right. Thank you, Ms. President. I'm wondering if this is more appropriate for the DPW, for the Water Department to be involved in directly with the conversation, because it sounds like they have some specific questions for them.
Absolutely would be invited to this meeting as well, yes. If they choose to come.
So motion to amend and also to send to the Water Department, DPW.
Oh, yes, second to amend the motion.
Second. As amended, I mean, the, the subcommittee can just invite the department heads too, but that's okay, we can go forward. Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. Are they seeking to enjoin the Water Commission from changing the rates? Because there's a window of time where they can do that kind of thing.
If...
And they should know that.
Okay, okay, I am not aware of the window of time, but if you would like me to do something about that?
Well, I can't provide legal advice because of where I'm sitting, but they can ask and that we have those kinds of things, like the public gets to appeal decisions that we've made within a certain window of time. And if they have a good reason, they could probably talk to somebody who can provide legal advice to tell them how to proceed. We've seen that kind of thing before, so.
I'll be happy to forward you the email so that you can share that with them.
I can tell them that, but I'm not going to tell them, give them the advice. I think because we're, you know, what we represent, we have to be careful with that, but I think that they should know that they have that option. But I'll, I'll be happy to reply.
Yeah, this, this is one of the reasons why we don't do these kinds of things during public participation. It's, you know, we can hit reset button and bring it in as a motion as we move forward, but any other discussion? Counselor Burns, you had, I thought you had.
No, good, I agree.
You're good, okay.
Thank you.
So we are now sending it to Water. What subcommittee? Natural Resources. Anything else?
Having the, having the letter part of the public record. The full letter.
That's so written. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. I don't like the process.
One no vote. Anything else from public participation before we close it up? Seeing none. Counselor Figgy, communications from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion requesting immediate consideration of the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $73,910 from the Mass DOT to the Airport Department for the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan and Spill Prevention Control Countermeasures Update. The local share is $3,890 and is in the Airport Department FY21 budget.
Second. Motion made and seconded on immediate consideration. Any further discussion?
Yes, in conversations with Director Wollenberg, it was another last-minute grant that came through. This is the third one, I believe, in the last three weeks. So kudos to, to Chris and his team. And this is to allow us to have the airport come in compliance with the new EPA changes and it will make us current.
Anything else? Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Love a motion with pollution prevention, just saying.
Counselor Oniski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will add that when you hear "last minute, last minute, last minute," that's, that's a good thing. Most people think something coming in last minute is, is bad, it's not done, it just got finished. Well, this is things that the airport has ready, shovel-ready, and, and there's extra money left over from the, from the state. And it's a, it's a great way to capture that money by having everything prepared and ready for it. Thank you.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belchandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Figgy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion requesting immediate consideration of the transfer of $34,985.15 within the Department of Public Works Highway Division Equipment Vehicle Account 1421-585001 to Storm Water Division Equipment Vehicles Account Number 68504550-585001 for the purpose of a vehicle for Storm Water Division to perform daily tasks.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the immediate consideration. Further discussion?
Yes, this will allow the Storm Water Division of DPW to not have to borrow trucks from other divisions. It is a, the reason for the, recently they, they've asked to lease, but now they want to purchase this truck because as Director Kane has said before, the delay time, the lag time is sufficient. This vehicle is on the lot, it's ready to go, it's got what they need, and they will be able to plow with it as well. So it's money they have available, the vehicle's available, and they won't have to wait a year and a half like they will for the big dump.
Counselor Sullivan?
I would just add, the money's available because it was originally scheduled to be the final lease payment on another vehicle, which was paid off in a previous year, so this money's still carried forward when there was no lease payment in this budget. So it's actually money that was set aside for a vehicle anyway, but in this particular case, they're going to purchase it outright.
Anything else? Seeing none, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Belchandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Figgy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion requesting immediate consideration for the transfer of $1,500 within the Department of Public Works Water Division Purchase of Service Account FY21 to the Water Division Purchase of Service Account FY20 for a prior-year bill.
Second. Motion made and seconded on the immediate consideration. Counselor Figgy?
Yes, this, this billing situation arose when the testing lab that the Water Department was using was bought out by another, another lab, and there was a delay in the processing of the, the bills. There was also some confusion as to the exact amount for the billing as it was a new provider. And as a result, $1,500 is a balance on the PFAS testing that needs to be paid.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belchandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Figgy?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion requesting immediate consideration for the appropriation of $125,000 from free cash to planning, community development, purchase of service account for the master plan study for the city of Westfield.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Yes, this is a situation where the funding for the master plan was in the original mayor's budget, but was cut in order to balance the budget. Is now the attempt to get this going, and the money will go into the community development purchase of service account, and a PO will be issued before the end of the year, fiscal year, so that the money will be able to be utilized.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to say, you know, thank you to the mayor, and this is an example of some of the things we can do if we negotiate with the mayor during budget time. I think he got the impression that this was a priority for us, and he heard us loud and clear when we asked him to fund it in a variety of different ways. And this is a solution that's appropriate right now. We can appropriate the money out of free cash, he can sign the contract before the end of the year and we can get it done.
He can sign the contract before the end of the year, and we can get it done. The alternative was to wait and put it in next year's Free Cash and wait till later in the year, but this is something we've been waiting for long enough, and I'm glad to see action on it right now. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And PJ Miller, as well as Jay Vinsky, will be very much involved in this whole process. And you're right, Counselor Flaherty, this is as a result of negotiations with the Mayor that has allowed this to come to this point. So I'm pleased.
Counselor Oniski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Finance, this is the final cost of it, right? It's not a 50% down payment, it's $125,000 for the whole?
If I may.
Go ahead.
We don't know the exact dollar amount, but this is the ballpark figures that other communities have been using as a way of doing theirs. Chickaby's about halfway through their master plan, and they've budgeted $125,000. So we feel that this should be sufficient.
Thank you. Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Normally, I'm not really thrilled about moving this much money really quickly, but I have to say, Ms. Dvinsky told me that the last master plan we had happened before I was born. So I thank you very much for everyone who advocated to make this happen, and I'm in full support. Thank you very much.
Can you take a seat?
Thank you, Counselor. A quick thing. I just, I guess my only issue right now is that I'm not convinced, a couple of things. One, I'm not convinced that we will be able to get a contract out the door by July 1. I don't, we don't know who the vendor is. It's a lot of money. I'm not really concerned about the money itself, but there's been very little conversation, I think, on the Council side. This is something that we've all been interested in. You know, I've had this discussion with other Councilors, too, just about, we've all run on master plans, and I think there's a rack of master plans in offices all across the City Hall right now, and I'm not sure we take advantage of them very well. So I'm very concerned about, lack of a better term, wasting this money. I think some good things will come out of it, but I'm concerned. I really don't want to hold it up for immediate consideration, because I really don't like to do that, and I was well aware of this, and I haven't had a conversation with the Mayor. But not having someone in place, and it's already the 17th, and what the scope of work will be and what will it include, we're giving a lot of money out there to spend on something that we don't know what it's going to really be spent on, although a master plan, of course. I don't know if I'll like the fact that we have somebody. We've had people go through the City Hall before that we've liked, and then others that have, that we haven't liked. So I'm just concerned that we're rushing this again. And that's usually not me. I like things to be done fairly quickly, but I'm just not convinced that we can have this done in two weeks, unless someone else can convince me otherwise.
Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. So they've been thinking about it for a while. It was yanked out of last year's budget. So they've had plans to do this for a while. It is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. The person who's in charge is somebody we all know, while the Council's been around for a while, know. He knows the city inside and out. He used to work for the city. The budget is derived from neighboring cities, and this is something that this commission does on a regular basis for towns and cities, you know, around the area. Counselor Sullivan might be able to explain a little bit more.
Well, I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just a little interested to know that they've in fact hired the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do it. So they obviously have put the cart before the horse here.
I believe that's what they told us the other day, right?
Yep.
Yep.
That is the plan, if the money's available, that's who they would go to. And they are confident they can get a contract signed before the 1st of July.
They probably can with them. But they precluded all their other options.
Counselor Mello and Counselor Alley?
Thank you. Mr. President, if the money doesn't get spent, does it get swept at the end of the year? So it just goes back to Free Cash?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
But there is a big delay before it's re-certified by the state. So you are going to lose months. You won't lose a year, but you're going to lose months.
Yeah. Historically, Free Cash is certified by the state in either October or November. This year, I believe, it was December. So that's the danger. Counselor Alley, then somebody else over here.
No, I was just pointing out that Counselor Mello was raising her hand.
Thank you for the help.
Thank you, President Pro Tempore.
Alley, yes.
And I might agree with Counselor Bean. The last master plan included projects that no contractor could pull off. The rents would have to be $1,100, which would be a small mortgage. How some of those projects found their way into a master plan when it really couldn't be built, fiscally impossible to pull off, this was heavily subsidized, and yet that found its way as part of the Elm Street development. We really need to think about these things. You know, we've got things that haven't been developed in decades, and we're still seeing very little going on. We need to get behind projects that can work, that the city can get behind, and get something done. And how some of these projects found their way into this, and we need to focus and help this downtown. Our small businesses have been through a lot, and many of them aren't coming back. These are people that worked their whole lives to build stuff. Our economic development needs to work. We spend big money and sometimes get almost nothing out of it. Economic development needs to work for people and be focused. So I'm going to agree with Counselor Bean, that should be the direction. Some of these things are almost contrived, they're almost facilitated. I've been in some of these sessions, the cards are already pre-printed. You know, I said, the community should be behind it, and there should be consensus of the citizens of the city, not those in favor of doing whatever, especially when sometimes it's projects that nobody could afford, you know, rents of like $1,100. Nobody's going to live and look at the Westfield River and stare at power lines and pay $1,100 for it, when the rents downtown were $400 or $500 or much less. So economically, it didn't make any sense. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you. And this is a different animal than the economic, Downtown Economic Development Plan. This is a requirement of the Planning Board. Like, it's not something new. It's a requirement, and the Planning Board is supposed to do this on a regular basis. And it's not just about economic development, it's about all kinds of things like zoning and where people are going to live, and the housing rules, and how to get funding from different government sources, and all kinds of demographics. There's a ton of stuff that gets done in this process. Originally, my ask was to have him increase the Free Cash line item, the $2 million that's currently proposed in his budget, and add this to the expense side so that it could be done after July 1. But during that process, there was a discussion about, well, we really don't want to spend that much more Free Cash because, you know, it's already $2 million. So what's another option? The option is spend it on this year's budget, when there's some money left over, and it wouldn't hit next year's budget. I don't think there was ever a discussion of whether we need it or not. I thought the concept was, we do need it, but how best to fund it. And I think the Councilors are right to question what the content is, but they have quite the opportunity to participate in the master plan process. It's led by the Planning Department and interested parties throughout the city, in education, healthcare, home market, you know, commercial market. Everybody gets to play and participate in the development of that document and the long-term plan for the city. And I think it's appropriate that we start as soon as we can. If this doesn't pass tonight, I'm going to go back to them and ask them to make sure we get it in next year's budget. So we don't have to wait till October, November, December to do this. It's really an appropriate, important thing to do, and it can drive so many of our decisions in the city. For example, there's a trucking moratorium ordinance request in something else I'm on, zoning, planning, and development. Zoning, planning, and development meeting, we talked about that and said, you know what, that's a nice idea, but we really should wait till after the master plan is done before we decide on those kind of important things. Because maybe during the master plan, there'll be some kind of, you know, thought process into how we want to grow our city that might affect whether we have trucking or not trucking in certain parts of town. So I think there's a lot of good reasons to do this, and I would encourage people to support it tonight. If not, you'll see me on Monday. I'm going to come back with a whole bunch of things that we should talk about, you know, before the budget closes out, and I'm hoping that this gets funded sometime very quickly. Thank you. And if PVPC is not the right organization, then we should make it pretty clear to the people who are making the buying decision that we want to have a bid process and explore options. Thank you.
Counselor Bean?
And I guess, I'm not questioning the need, or if it's going to be Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, their ability. That, the Counselor Flaherty's statement right there was my concern, is that once we do this, we lose control of this stuff. I don't think there's going to be much input at that given point. I'd rather know who's doing it, the scope of work, you know, sort of like when we are buying a truck, right? You know, we know what we're buying. That's my only concern. You know, and unfortunately, again, this is immediate consideration, so one vote kills this thing. So I, you know, I won't be the lone soul on this, but I really have some issues with this, and it's concerning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, I concur with a lot of what Counselor Bean has, and Counselor Flaherty has said, too. You know, I think about the North Side, I think about the master plan. People on the North Side, you know, they do not want more trucks. South Hampton Road is already busy enough. But we really, it's one of those things where you have to spend some money and come up with a plan. And I guess it's trust. I guess we have to trust Jay Vinsky and Peter Miller and the team, and the Planning Board and everything, to work out, to, you know, and the people that are going to do this, to work out the plan. And I guess, you know, they need to listen to us, because we're the voice of the people of Westfield. We're the voice of the taxpayer. So I would just, I guess it's a lot of trust. I guess that's the bottom line, and I, so, but I'm a little uneasy, as Counselor Bean so noted. But I, you know, on the other hand, I do agree with what Counselor Flaherty said about getting this thing moving forward, so we can move the city forward, because it's been a long time, as Counselor Mello said.
Not that long.
I would never think you were that old, Counselor Mello.
Not that long.
It's a lifetime.
Just my final thought, because I kind of started.
Counselor Bean?
All I'll say is, I will support, but as a group of 13, we really need to get together on this and have discussions with the Mayor and the Planning Department. I'm not concerned about the Planning Department so much. I just, it's, again, and I've had these discussions with some people within City Hall, the communication piece here is lacking. And that's what, that's what concerns me the most. It's not that we don't need it, who can do it, it's just the communication piece is lacking. And I really think if we had that, I wouldn't be second, you know, questioning this issue. So I'll support moving forward as long as, you know, we have 12 other people behind me here, but.
Okay.
You're not. So it's going to fail.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
With all due respect to Mr. Figgy who presented it, no.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
No.
Bean?
No.
No.
Yes.
Motion fails.
So we are in item six.
Yes.
Submitting an amendment to the FY-22 budget relative to Health Department budget.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to submit an amended FY-22 budget relative to the Health Department budget to Finance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
After Director Roush presented last night, he discovered that there was a line item omitted from his budget for $30,000. The cut that we made to the Mayor's budget is $30,000. So what they want to do is just slide everything around and have that as part of the FY-22 budget.
Motion's just to send it to Finance, right?
Yes. Motion's just to send to Finance.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on the transfer to Finance? Seeing Counselor, Counselor Flaherty?
So we're back to zero.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. All right.
Well, we're not approving it yet.
Yeah, that's true. But thanks for all the efforts. All right.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now in the hands of Finance.
Thank you.
Counselor Figgy?
Thank you. Make a motion to submit a resolution in anticipation of a grant from the Department of Conservation Recreation for the Columbia Greenway Northwest Extension Study in the amount of $61,500 to the Engineering Department. The local match of $15,500 is contained in the FY-22 engineering budget. First reading by title only and refer to Finance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I'd like to get into this more in Finance and figure out exactly what it's for. That's why I'm suggesting that we do that. First reading by title only will allow us to bring it out in the July meeting with just one vote.
Any other discussion?
It's a resolution, I need one. Here I thought it was being financed.
So you don't, so you don't need a first reading?
So we don't need a first reading by title.
So it's just refer to Finance?
Just refer to Finance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now in the hands of Finance.
Thank you.
Counselor Figgy?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Item eight, City Properties. Will we take this one?
Oh, we'd love to. Right, Dan?
Sure.
Unless there's some objection from the Chair going on.
No, apparently not, no.
I'm sure he's got plenty.
I believe this is city property we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Must have missed that meeting. All right. Have Madam City Clerk read item eight and refer to City Properties.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now in the hands of City Properties. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please ask Madam Clerk to read nine, 10, and 11, refer to Personnel Action Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Item nine is submitting the reappointment of Richard Sloy, 220 Russellville Road, as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2026. Ten is submitting the appointment of Richard Echmelian Jr., 12 Crestwood Circle, as a member of the Council on Aging, for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. And eleven is submitting the appointment of Joseph Goleo, 109 Wildflower Circle, as a member of the Off-Street Parking Commission, for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk? No, you voice.
You don't need a roll call for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're just going into committee.
Yeah, just go into committee.
That's when you zoom in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Believe me, I enjoy doing that.
Not more than we did.
Well, you could, you've been calling me out all day on that one. That's good. Keep it going. Reports of city officers.
There are none.
Petitions, remotions, and other papers. Item 12. Counselor Belltraddy, do you mind?
I do not. Item 12 is a continued public hearing by Verizon, and the proponent was unavailable to be here tonight, so all we're doing is asking to extend this to our next meeting.
Second. Which would be our July 1 meeting.
Yes, July 1.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Reports of committees. Counselor Matthews Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, June 15, the Finance Committee met regarding the transfer of $14,711.17 within the Police Department from full-time salary account to equipment vehicles account for the purchase of a replacement administrative vehicle. And upon a three-to-zero vote, we recommended the approval of the transfer.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Police Department wishes to replace one of their existing administrative vehicles. The one they are replacing is a 12-year-old Ford Taurus with a faulty transmission and rust issues. The intended replacement vehicle is a 2021 Ford Edge, which costs $35,854.60. The Police Department currently has $12,548.83 in the equipment account because of grant money obtained, and $8,594 in the intergovernmental account because they were not able to send recruits to the Academy. because they were not able to send recruits to the academy this year. Both of these amounts can go towards the purchase of the vehicle, but that leaves them $14,711.77 short. They wish to transfer that amount from the full-time salary account, which has funds left due to lower staffing levels during COVID and some early retirements. The Police Department reminded the committee that they have been selling their vehicles through the city's auction process. These funds go back into the general fund and so far this year, it has generated $57,800 in proceeds for the city.
Any other discussion on the expenditure? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Item 14, Counsel Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and on a three-nothing vote recommends the transfer of $45,000 within the Department of Public Works from the Solid Waste Recycling Division to the Waste Collection Division as follows. $13,000 from full-time hourly account to purchase a services account, from purchase of services account to purchase of services account in the amount of $12,000 and from surplus account to purchase of service account. I'm sorry, that's the $12,000, the other one was 20. $20,000 from purchase of service to purchase of services and $12,000 from supplies to purchase of services. So move.
Second.
All right, this, this looks way more complicated than it really is. Which is why I told everybody during the budget presentation tonight to pay attention. So what this all stems from is basically they need the money in the solid waste hauling part of the contract and they're moving it from the recycling part of the contract because that's going to balance them out for the end of the year. I did have the occasion last evening to talk to Joe Roush as to how these numbers were arrived at because as you're probably aware, prior to this year, this was all paid for out of the Health Department account at the landfill because they took care of the hauling. That is now paid for out of the DPW. Joe Roush, when they tried to figure out what was solid waste in terms of what's collected curbside versus what's collected at Twist Street, both for solid waste and for recycling, Joe made an estimate. He was pretty close. And this is what the difference was, quite honestly. We were assured that this will get the department to the end of this fiscal year, both on the recycling and the solid waste. And the difference of the salary was referenced tonight also during the budget presentation, which is an individual who has left the employ of the city, was not refilled for this year. So they took that vacant money. That available money out of the full-time salary account won't necessarily repeat into next year's budget, but it's here for this year's budget. So it's basically a transfer within department.
Any others discussion?
Don't, don't ask me to repeat it incorrectly again.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Brad, thanks for sticking around on that one, we appreciate it. All right, Legislative Ordinance Committee. Counsel Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. LNO met on June 15th and upon a two-zero vote, voted for recommendation of a resolution authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Southwick for dispatch services.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Overall, what we're doing is looking at having Southwick join us and Westfield become a regional dispatch center. Nina Barsh runs a dispatch center, has done a phenomenal job at, at putting this together. And it really entails getting a lot of grants. I'll go through some of the details, but let me do an overview. When you become a regional dispatch center, it opens up the door for millions of dollars of grants that Westfield otherwise would not get if they remained on their own dispatch and Southwick remained on their own dispatch. So, I mean, from a financial standpoint, it opens us up to probably close to a million dollars a year in grants. And where the current budget is, is around, you know, 700, $750,000 for the Westfield emergency dispatch, it, it could go down as low as, you know, $20,000 by the end of the year. We have to put the money in the budget and then it gets refunded through the grant. So we have to put the money upfront to begin with. Westfield, that is, has to put the money upfront to begin with and then, then can get the grants. Now, there's four grants that go along with this. Development grant, supporting and incentive grant, training and emergency medical dispatch grant. The, the biggie is the, the development and support and incentive. Those grants will get us the money to connect to Southwick. So what needs to happen is a, come up with a fiber run between Westfield and Southwick for their dispatch centers and also microwave link, one being the backup to the other. So that gets the communication going between the two, the two departments or two, two cities and towns. And after that, there's, needs to be money so that the systems will all join in together. So there's, I'll throw some other details out here. The timeline on this, they feel that they can get this going in about 18 months. But if not, the state grants can come in with, let's say, $700,000. Then Westfield and Southwick will do $700,000 worth of work and then wait until the next grant cycle. And then we'll get some more money and complete the work. So the timeline is, is sort of dependent on the, the state grants. Now, these grants, you know, I ask myself, what would happen if they went away? But this is the money, extra money that you pay on your cell phone bills that go to this. I forget how much it is. I mean, it's a tiny amount on your cell phone bill, but when you add up everybody who's got cell phones, it works out to a, a lot of money. So the critical steps would be done first to get the communication. And, and it really almost seems too good to be true when we, when we looked at these numbers. But it isn't. And, you know, my, my hat's off to Nina for putting this together. There is a, there is a time crunch with this. And the time crunch is end of the year. So the state is really waiting for this resolution and agreement to be signed before they could give us the money. And, and Nina's been in communication with the, with the state on this. So they, they know that we're, we're hopefully going to do this and are, are holding, now they can't officially hold money, but they will give us, they will give us money to do this if we get this in by end of year. So legitimately, we need to vote on this tonight. I think it's, you know, a great idea, it's been talked about before. And, and it's a home run for, for Westfield and Southwick. We've got lots of agreements with Southwick or have had in the past. And there's a mutual aid, there's been building inspectors, electrical inspectors, weights and measures. So we work with Southwick a lot and, and they're equally as excited to join us in this endeavor because it will save them money also. So it's really a win-win situation. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Burns.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And to piggyback on that with Counsel Oniski, eventually the city of Westfield is going to have to regionalize with, you know, for, for this. It's going to have to happen. And why not us be the lead on this? And we're, and the city will be open to other communities joining us if they would like. You know, the more the mayor, the more the grants go up. So this isn't something that, and by the, Southwick was going to go with Chicopee and now they are going to go with Westfield, regionalized. So I think it's a, like, like Counsel Oniski said, this is a win-win, especially for us and for Southwick. You know, they're our, I guess our, well, they're our neighbors. So, but it, it's, it's a good thing and I, I think I recommend approval of this. Thank you.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yep, thank you. And I agree, absolute home run. We've been talking about this for eight or 10 years. All the prior mayors were advocates for this. Many of us, been on council for a long time, have been advocates for this. We, we did this years ago with the goal of becoming a regional center. I'm a little bit disappointed that it took us this long to get here and we've seen others like Chicopee came out of nowhere and beat us to it and, you know, North, you know, North Hampton and other places have these regional centers. We, we could have been playing in that game earlier. But needless to say, where we are now, it's a great thing, it's a home run. We're going to save money. This is the kind of thing that can save the city money and help solve some of our other long-term things that I'm looking at. You know, if this saves us 800, 900, a million dollars a year, that's a lot of money to save in the local budget that we can earmark towards some of the other obligations we have and other things that we go on as priority. So I'm glad to see it happening and I, I personally believe there's other room in our budget for deals like this in certain areas to collaborate and to save money. If we all put pressure on and focus on, we can solve these problems. And this is a great example of it, kudos to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add to the other counselors in my praise of Nina. This, this was an amazing job. I remember how upset the residents were when they first heard about Southwick looking at Chicopee. And she just stepped right in and, you know, to be honest, dispatchers are the unsung heroes of public safety and I just really appreciate all the work they're doing and thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
May I ask Madam City Clerk to read the resolution? Or if it's not ready, I can read it, get it on my screen. Okay, may I?
By all means.
Thank you, Mr. President. A resolution approving an intermunicipal agreement regarding dispatch services with the Town of Southwick. Whereas the city of Westfield has a dispatch center and the Town of Southwick is in need of someone who can provide dispatch services. And whereas Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, authorizes cities and towns and the Commonwealth to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the approval of the city council and mayor in the cities. And whereas an intermunicipal agreement has been negotiated between the city of Westfield and the Town of Southwick for the city of Westfield to provide dispatch services to the Town of Southwick. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Westfield City Council that authority be given to the mayor to enter into an intermunicipal agreement for the dispatch services with the Town of Southwick. The end.
Well done. A little spunky tonight, a little spunky. Anything else? I think we're good, right? All right. Item 16. Counsel Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. LNO met on June 15th and with a positive two-zero recommendation, voted in favor of a petition submitted by the Planning Board for zoning amendment at Sections 1, 1, 4, 1, 6, and 4 dot 5 relative to strengthening codifying wording regarding enforcement and extend permit validity times.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This was really part of a cleanup on the, from the Planning Board. They wanted to do this. And it extends the validity time of special permits, which is now two years, to be three years. Also, there were some, there were some enforcement without penalties prior to this for some of the zoning ordinances. And, you know, without a penalty, there's really no enforcement. So some of that was added. Let's see. Doesn't give the building inspector any more power. It just makes the language a little more precise. It also allows the city to withhold permits from properties that are in violation, where that didn't exist before. Where currently the only zoning that was really allowed to be enforced was for unregistered vehicles. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
I have a question. Mr. President.
Counsel Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did LNO make any changes in subcommittee or just accepted them as is?
We just accepted.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, and I, I appreciate this, especially the timeliness of this because during COVID and some of the ways the insurance companies are actually behaving now, which is almost impossible. There's situations out there that, that extending a special permit construction and then some people can't even get something framed will be helpful. Even, like I said, the price of materials is through the roof, but you may be able to get a foundation in. Good luck getting the damn thing framed. So there's a lot of things that have interrupted things in the last year. And of course, this is not retroactive, but even if they're considering doing this, because some of those special permits may come back, just because you can't get stuff done for one reason or another in that two-year timeframe, which can go by fast when you have something like COVID hit. And like I said, the insurance companies, if you've talked to anybody that's in building, they're, they're being awful and there's almost, you know, nothing you can do about it. We shouldn't all have the same insurance companies because that doesn't help matters. But this is a very good thing. Thank you.
Well, ZBD came up with it, we just looked at it. So thanks to that committee for, and the Planning, and the Planning Board.
The Planning Board does a lot of thoughtful, deep work. You came from the Planning Board. You know, they, they really do their due diligence and they, they work, so.
Anything else from the council?
This would be a first reading by title only.
Anything else? First reading by title, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Oniski?
Yes, move for second reading and final passage at our July 1st meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, anything else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We all do what we can to help LNO.
Item 17, Counsel Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 15th, LNO met and upon a two-zero vote, voted to recommend a petition for a zoning amendment submitted by Zoning Board of Appeals to update definitions at Article 2 slash 2 dash 20, Article 3 slash various, and Article 4 slash various.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, this was a, a little bit of a cleanup here. There were some definitions that were moved and rearranged from the original, original ordinance. Also defined a building, what the building height is, where that was never defined. I didn't think you would need to, but you do. Also defined a building, what the building height is, where that was never defined. I didn't think you would need to, but you do. So it extracted a lot of different parts and put it together. And it made it a little bit more concise. Added updated definitions. And, you know, ZBD recommended this because the current language was very difficult to understand. So it reshuffled this essentially into an organized format without really changing anything. Thank you.
Keep a look. Anything else from the council? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Is it a first reading?
Motion for first reading by title only, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
It's taking just as long.
I feel like I'm exhausted up here. It's like reentry is tough.
After you listen to this, I don't blame you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Oniski.
Motion for second reading and final passage at our July 1st meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Counsel Burns.
Yeah, this will be a little easier. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's hope.
Little easier. June 15th, ELLNO met and on a 2-0 vote, we voted to leave in committee a petition C-262-21 for zoning amendments submitted by the planning board of appeals for update of non-conforming situations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to leave in committee. Any discussion?
Just real quickly, a couple of department heads wanted to eyeball this. It will be coming out very soon. Back to us.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel Action Committee, Counselor Harris.
19.
19.
What am I doing?
19 first, then 20.
I got to go back to Counselor Burns, don't I? Counselor Burns.
Unfortunately, on, again, on June 15th, ELLNO met and on a 2-0 vote, we voted to leave in committee following petition C-260-21 for zoning amendment submitted by the zoning board of appeals to update the definition of family and related affected residential living arrangement matters.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Again, we're going, the department head wanted to eyeball this, and it will come back very quickly.
Counsel Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item and the one before it, it times out. It times out, I think, beginning of August. So if we want this to go through, we may have to have a special meeting because it would be first reading at the, at our next meeting, full city council meeting hopefully, and then it requires second reading. So we are not going to be having meetings, I assume, after our July 1st meeting until the third week in August. You know, there was consideration about doing a first reading by title only tonight. But it was felt that there might be such significant changes or had the possibility of having significant changes to it where you couldn't really do that. So it would have to been re-advertised after that. So we decided it would be best to go this route. Thank you.
Motion to leaving committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Action Committee met on 6/16/21, Counselors Figgy, Sullivan, and myself, regarding the next six items. The reappointment of William Corella, 16 Wildflower Circle, as a member of the planning board for a term to expire the first Monday, February 2026, on a 3-0 vote. We recommend that reappointment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Corella is chair of the planning board since 2019. He was first appointed to this board in March 2015 by Mayor Knappick. He also served much earlier, two years during the Varellis administration. Mr. Corella is the owner of Corella Insurance Agency, West Springfield, and thus he does everything a business owner needs to do. He was very involved in the Westfield Soccer Club, being the founder, coach, and president of that entity. And currently is the soccer coach at St. Mary's High School. He has a BA in economics and political science from the University of Rochester, New York. Mr. Corella is a lifelong resident of Westfield, and at his last reappointment in September 2016, Counselor Oniski stated that he had worked with Mr. Corella when he was on the planning board and recommended him. At that meeting also, Counselor Sullivan said that Mr. Corella was progressive in looking at items such as the bicycle commuting and that he shows a great commitment to the city, and Counselor Figgy agreed.
Any other discussion on the reappointment? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes, next item is the reappointment of Raymond St. Hilaire, 120 Old Stage Road, as a member of the planning board for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2026, on a 3-0 vote. We recommend that reappointment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel Harris.
Thank you. Mr. St. Hilaire is the Ward 6 member of the planning board, initially appointed 01/2012 as an alternate, now called associate, and then appointed full member 03/2017 by Mayor Brian Sullivan. He's an active member of our community and participated in many Hand and Ponds meetings regarding the rehabilitation of Hand and Ponds Park. A military leader, he works for the Department of Defense since 2004, including preparing and maintaining aircraft maintenance records and historical documents. He has been the union steward since 2004 for the Army Aviation Flight Facility Number 2 in Westfield, mediating discussions between employee and employer representatives to reconcile differences, negotiated collective bargaining agreements, and advising on labor relations policy. He was vice president of Victory for Veterans, helping to raise 250,000 for veterans at our Holyoke Soldiers Home. He served in Iraq, supervising soldiers, establishing protocols for preventative maintenance procedures for medevac aircraft, and worked closely with crew members in an extremely dangerous environment. He believes it's his obligation to our city to serve it as he does our country. And we all thanked him also for his service.
Anything else on the reappointment? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Thank you. The next item is the reappointment of Philip McEwen, 153 Western Avenue, was a member of the planning board for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2023. Mr. McEwen was the chair of the board for many, many years, and although Mr. Corella is chair now, Mr. McEwen, Mr. McEwen is like E.F. Hutton with his vast knowledge and historical data that can only come with being on this board since 1989, 30-plus years. An accomplishment of service to our city, of which I'm sure thank you for your dedication, will be stated by many. He still is employed also at Marcus Printing and along with the wealth of information he has in regards to this board, of which not only this board benefits, but all our citizens do, as he provides insight and works on behalf, but is the Ward 3 member. He is looking forward to continuing to serve our city on this board.
Anything else on the reappointment? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Thank you. The next item is the reappointment of Barbara Taylor, 150 Hillside Road, as a member of the council on aging for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. Ms. Taylor was first appointed in 2015 and then reappointed, and shared with the mayor that she enjoys being on this board and hopes to continue as a member, sharing her thoughts and ideas as it pertains to our senior population during this past difficult year for our seniors, with them not being able to gather at the center for any of their activities, and all the years that preceded that still had issues that had to be addressed in this population's everyday life. Those are all important issues to her. She is the treasurer of this board, in which she reviews the COA budget prior to submission to the council. She's an active participant in the senior center's classes, educational programs, and volunteers in the annual senior options event. She's a wonderful asset to this board, has served on several subcommittees. And Council on Aging and Senior Center Director Tina Gorman highly recommends her.
Anything else on the reappointment? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Thank you. The next item is the reappointment of Jane McGarian, 131 Llewellyn Drive, as a member of the planning board for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2022. Ms. McGarian is the Ward 4 member of this board, initially being appointed in 2012. She taught in the Westfield school system for over 10 years, recently retiring in 2015. Before that, she was vice president of McGarian Development involving custom homes and communities. She has a BA in economics and a master's degree in education. She states it's a pleasure to serve our city on this board and looks forward to continuing to serve on this board. Counsel Sullivan and Counsel Figgy said she was a great member.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. The last item is the reappointment of Brian Ferret, 43 Flint Street Palmer, as director of facilities management for a term to expire May 31, 2024. First hired in June 2015, Mr. Ferret has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, maintains a Massachusetts construction supervisor's license, and is OSHA qualified. At last reappointment, 09/18, we reviewed all the projects he had oversight and/or performed work on, which was significant, being a hangar two, police station renovations, fire headquarters sprinkler installation, city clerk's vault renovation, replacement of boilers at schools, Bollensfield bleacher renovation and light replacement, repairs to the playfields and concession stands at multiple city properties. The Green Communities Grant he worked on was approximately $267,000 and $31,000 in GE rebates. He worked on the PEG studio at WTA and earlier had worked on city hall renovations and repairs. These past three years, major projects overseen by Mr. Ferret include citywide emergency power generated services maintenance and repair contract, citywide HVAC repair, maintenance, and repair services contract, citywide plumbing maintenance and repair services contract, citywide elevator maintenance contract, work at the police department replacing air conditioners, fire station headquarters generator replacement, and work at fire station number three with the elevator, Westfield High School gym roof renovations, design and construction phase, Westfield High School pool renovation design phase, citywide building management system upgrade design phase, new Westfield Elementary School building committee, Westfield High School stairwells, hallways, cafeteria, Munger Hill, and paper mill schools, resulting in Westfield GNE rebates of $46,023,4 into the general fund and $10,000 into the general fund from the Green Communities Grant for administration costs for project procurement and management completed by the director. The Green Communities Grant totaling approximately $370,000 procured from new LED lighting throughout the city properties at schools, highway garage, Barnes Airport Terminal Building, and WTA Gym. Tammy Tefat, Westfield's chief procurement officer, at his last reappointment stated, "Mr. Ferret continues to serve our city significance amounts of money versus hiring outside firms for project," and she continues to believe that. At the meeting, Counsel Figgy also added that he brings in much more in grants than his salary.
Anything further? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. City Properties Committee, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Properties Committee met on June 7th and June 17th to discuss the flagpole ordinance. We'd like to recommend a 3-0 vote tonight for first reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes, thank you. You should have all received the document earlier in the week by email. And I left a copy on the table tonight that includes some edits that we've made over the last week and tonight during our meeting. The goal is to have a set of standard rules for placing what we're calling auxiliary flags on city-owned flagpoles and as a form of government speech, not as a form of free speech. So if you look through the ordinance, you'll see that it pretty much covers everything there is to define why we're doing this, what the flagpoles are, the city-owned flagpoles, the exclusive use of government. It talks about the priorities of flags and the flags that are allowed, including the American flag, all current and historical versions of American flag, the states, regions, countries, territories, reservations, districts, towns, et cetera. Any current historic flag of Massachusetts or Westfield, on school properties, any flags associated with the schools, on city sports fields, any flags associated with the teams that might be on the sports field at the time that they're there. And then it defines auxiliary flag as any other flag that's not included in that pile. So that would be the flags of causes or special interests or groups or teams or whatever the mayor deems that's not included in that first set of items. Any flags flown on the city flagpoles must be flown in a manner consistent with the U.S. Flag Code. At no time will flags be displayed that are deemed by the mayor inappropriate in many ways. And the list, I'll just go quickly through it, is commercial in nature, inappropriate or offensive, supporting discrimination or prejudice, supporting insurrection, criminal activity, violence, property destruction, civil disobedience, relating in any way to religious items, relating in any way to political items, relating to an individual person or family. So no happy birthday, mom kind of flags, or displaying words in any languages, images, or symbols that are deemed obscene, offensive, or hateful. Auxiliary flags may only be flown where there are two or more flagpoles, never on the same pole as the American flag, never on national or state holidays or days of remembrances. Any auxiliary flag must not exceed the size of the adjacent American flag. There's a method for boards, commissions, counselors, school committee to submit requests to the mayor, but the discretion of the flags flying is completely up to the mayor. This is a, like, making a suggestion to the mayor. If he wants to do it, that's great. There's no by right assumption. There's no free speech assumption. It's the mayor's choice. And that's historically how we've done it here. The people have gone to the mayor and asked for a flag to be up, and he's made that decision without coming to the city council or any other board or commission. Members of the public can also request through a form that the mayor will create to make a suggestion, like they may want to put the flag of 1812 up for a certain time period, or they may want to fly the Celtics' flag when the Celtics in the playoffs, or the Red Sox, or the Yankees, or any other of a myriad of flags. Again, it's a suggestion to the mayor. The mayor gets, not the Red Sox? The Yankees?
That's right, Counsel. That's perfect. Thank you.
Well, I'm leaving it up to the mayor. The city, there was a question about, well, how does a citizen get involved in this and make a complaint? So we suggested that there be a feedback form on the city website that allows people to give feedback to the mayor, but it's absolutely just feedback and advice so that he can get some feedback from the public if he wants it or if we want it in the future to change this ordinance to something more open. But the goal right now is that we're going to leave it in the hands of the mayor and try not to tell the mayor exactly what to and not to do to fly flags. There were some people that suggested, for example, putting specific flags on the list of things you could or couldn't fly. For example, the KKK flag, or the flag of Nazi Germany, or the rebel flag. But in committee, we talked about that once we start going down that path of defining what flags can and can't fly, then we're in a sense taking over that control from the mayor and having a discrimination thought in our mind that is not appropriate if we're trying to avoid that kind of thing. So all the terms in here are generic in nature. We're trying not to have any discriminatory predisposition in mind in the ordinance. It was based on an ordinance in Boston and in New Jersey that Counselor Morganelli found, a great one in New Jersey. Counsel Morganelli was the proponent of this. But I think we've worked on it a lot over the last two weeks. It's come into a place where I think it's very comfortable. I've worked with the city law department, exchanging emails several times. They're pretty happy with it. But there is a concern that we might have to take possession of a couple of flagpoles that we just don't know about. He's on vacation until the 28th, so I wanted to put this into first reading title only. We'll make any minor changes that need to be done and then figure out if we want to proceed at our next meeting in July or the one that we might have to schedule later in the month. So first reading title only. Can I be happy to answer any questions or comments?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Counsel Alley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Morganelli and Legal for their efforts. As Counsel Flaherty just said, we'll have two weeks to read the document in front of you. It is drafted largely from the city of Boston and then the city of New Jersey. They've done a lot of good work. We've met twice on this in like...
10 days, yeah.
Yeah, so anyways, but they have done, you know, there was questions before and it's really come along. With no ordinance, there is no process or protocol. And then the question becomes, by what authority and process are requests either approved or denied? And it becomes arbitrary. And so I commend Counsel Morganelli, we're all liaisons to a lot of committees or commissions and boards and stuff like that. He looked and there was no ordinance. And it raises a question. So other cities, including the capital city of Massachusetts, has an ordinance in place, and it was largely this because there's two kinds of discrimination, as we've heard in other cases. There's intended as well as unintended. And without a process in place, things become arbitrary. And so these guys have done outstanding work and, you know, we're up to our eyeballs in the budget. So they've done a lot of work, and I'm sure ELLNO appreciates their efforts.
Yes, yes, the flagpoles on city properties, that is important, and I'm glad you took it on on city properties. Makes sense.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, it's still an ordinance anyways.
Council Mello and Council Morgan.
But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to say thank you for the work on this, and I do recognize the fundamental need to distinguish between free speech and government speech. I do. First, I'd like to say I oppose 211, Part I. If the flag's not on the U.S. flagpole, the holidays shouldn't matter. Sections K and L seem redundant to me, and in general, I have a really uneasy feeling about all of this. First, it's the ambiguity. I believe that there's gray area between the phrases "historical" and "offensive." Also, it's not just certain recognized U.S. government flags over the years, it says of political division. And so I'm worried about that gray area, and I'd like more information about that. I'm worried about the speed. We just got the draft, and as people were talking about the budget, they said they couldn't, you know, speak with the taxpayers and the residents before voting, and I think that we should have the right to speak with the taxpayers and residents before voting with the draft that is actually being decided. Also, councilors haven't had a chance to review the policy that is currently in effect. The fact that there is not an ordinance does not mean there is no process. The Parks and Rec Commission adopted a process that was written up between the mayor and Park and Rec and the law department, and that process is currently, that policy is currently in place until an ordinance takes effect. So it is not true that there's nothing protecting us right now. In addition, there are no evidence given of the examples of the denials of flags, and even though I filed a public records request to find the applications in the meeting minutes on the items that were repeatedly spoken about in subcommittee where flags had been denied, the law department doing the records request could find no evidence of that. Also, Massachusetts has extensive code about flags and which ones can and can't fly, and in fact, they list the ones that they do allow to fly. And if they do, it's probably for a good reason, and I would like us not to be hasty. I would like us to do our due diligence, find out why other people do it, and see if we need to do it too. Also, the timing on this is absolutely horrendous. The fact that it was discovered only because there was a request to fly the Progress Pride flag, you know, okay, I get that, and the fact that the motion was filed, and I voted for that motion to go into committee, and that was fine. But an hour and a half before the flag was raised at City Hall, the agenda for the meeting to discuss it was filed. And before that flag was brought down, the meeting to discuss this ordinance was had. And I believe that the LGBT community has the right to celebrate June as Pride Month. I believe they have the right to celebrate that without their government deciding to hold meetings, to make ordinances that affect them, and then write emails asking them not to participate until it's over, and then not have them at the meeting where it is, and not have that meeting when you decide it broadcast, and then brought into council to vote when we only had 90 minutes to look at it. And I move that we table this until after June 1st out of respect for the LGBT community. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Clarification, what was the table again?
Table this item until after July 1st.
So she has to a date?
I had my hand up before Council Mello, before, so...
Once the table motion comes?
It's my motion, I can't even speak on it tonight. Go ahead, take your roll call. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
No.
Burns?
No.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
No.
Oniski?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
No.
Bean?
Yes.
Six yes.
Six yes, you said? That's tied. Motion fails. You're in still conversation. Council Flaherty.
Thank you. I just want to address a couple of questions. Can I just have a point of order? Not that I need to do this, but Councilor Morgan Alley had been called on first. Okay, yes, fair.
Council Morgan Alley, your floor is yours.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council Sullivan and Mr. President. Yeah, just a little bit of backtracking here. So I'm the liaison to the Park and Rec Commission, and a request came up to the Park and Rec Commission to fly a flag on the town green, on our city green. Now, upon looking at, it doesn't matter who or what group or what person wanted to fly a flag, it has no bearing on this at all. It has to do with the fact that a flag wanted to be raised on a flagpole, on a city flagpole on our green, that is what I believe is a flag for official government use, okay? So, American flag, city flag, state flag, POW, MIA, veterans' flag, something like that. So upon being at the meeting for the Park and Rec Commission and looking at the ordinances, I couldn't find any. There's nothing. And I want to commend Council Flaherty for working with me and doing a lot of the writing for this, just about all of it, and getting it into the right format and speaking to law department, because, you know, it's lacking. And I think it's, you know, we're giving people the, the people, the citizens of Westfield, the ability to fly a flag, any flag they wish, at the mayor's discretion like it's always been. The mayor has flown, had done flag raisings out here at City Hall for decades. Council Sullivan was the mayor, and he could probably attest to the flags that he's risen out there, that he's raised. So this really has nothing to do with who was asking to have the flag raised. I believe the American flag should fly, as the Flag Code says, the highest, it should be the largest flag, it shouldn't have any other flags flying with it. I stopped at a stoplight today, and there was a McDonald's there, and they had a McDonald's flag flying just under the American flag. To me, that is completely wrong. No flag should fly with the American flag. And I would further go with no flag should fly with the state flag, a POW, MIA flag, a veterans' flag, or the city of Westfield flag. If you want, if a flag flown for your group, for a person, for a cause, for a charity, anything like that, you can have a flag raising here like we've always done. So this was a fact that something was being asked of a commission that has no authority to fly flags in Westfield, and it put them in a very difficult position to put up a flag on the city green, which has never been done before as far as I can remember. I was Park and Rec Commission, I think, in my first year on the city council in 2007 or 2008. I can't ever remember a flag wanting to be raised on our city green, signage during an event only, that's all the Park and Rec Commission agrees to. You can put up a sign, whether it's a campaign event, or a farmer's market, or a pumpkin fest, or whatever it is, on the day of the thing, and you can't even advertise the day before. That's been their rule. So I'm all for sticking to what we've done before and for honoring our flags, because the flags parade out during the Olympics, they will do that shortly, this year, for the Summer Olympics. Our flag was flown at, Francis Scott Key wrote our Star Spangled Banner when that flag got raised. He saw it raised. If you go to the American, Museum of American History in Washington, D.C., there is an incredible, incredible display, and that very flag is laying there in the dim light. They hand-stitched it on a track, hand-stitched the flag together, the American flag. It's tattered, but it's there, and you can see it. It's amazing. It's about, it's almost a half, half the size, I think it's half the size of this room right, if not the size of the chambers that we're in right now. Absolutely breathtaking. It's a sign of our American freedom, and I would move that other flags have symbolic and meaning and government meaning, and that no flag should fly with them. And with that saying, Council Flaherty on the, and to Council Mello's comments about the timing. The timing was, I'm a city councilor, I was elected to work for the citizens of Westfield. I saw no ordinance. And as Council Flaherty put, you know, has said, government speech is different than the freedom of speech, and we need to be careful. And I saw a need for an ordinance. It had nothing to do with, you know, in hindsight, I guess I could have done it, waited a month before I did anything about it. But I needed to act. I saw that there was a, you know, I wasn't even thinking about that, but, you know, I'm just beside myself at some of the comments and stuff that I'm hearing about me and that's out there, which is completely false. So the location was the issue, and honoring our flags was the issue. Yes, there is a process in place, as Council Mello said, that is because the mayor asked the law department to come up with some kind of a draft policy, which he did, and he's following this policy that was given to him by the law department so he doesn't, so he doesn't get sued, or cross any barriers, or do something he's not supposed to. He wants to, you know, stick with what he's supposed to do as in the authority of the mayor, as being the chief executive officer of the city. So he's following this policy, but we need an ordinance. I mean, we're a city council, we were elected, this body of 13 was elected by the citizens of Westfield. And I think we need to protect our flags and how they fly. I would like to see added to the, and I know this probably isn't going to happen tonight, but I would like to see that the, that no flag can fly on the city flagpoles with another flag. I don't want to see any McDonald's flag or Red Sox flag with the POW, MIA flag, with the city flag, with the state flag, or any flag. If there's an auxiliary flag, it flies by itself on a flagpole, like it's done here for decades and decades, maybe even 100 years, I don't know, maybe even 300 years, out here in front of City Hall. It's getting late, I think I've said enough. I'm sure the newspapers will be abuzz with what I said in the next few days, but, you know, that's how I feel, and I feel like the flags are that important that we need to protect them. Thank you. People die, and people die for the flags that are out there.
Okay, Council. Any, for the first time, anybody for the first time that wishes to speak on this? Council Matthews Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. In general, I support having a flag ordinance, because I'm someone who likes having a process for things. For example, we're talking about naming a bridge, and one of the issues is what is the process for doing that? And I've also months ago submitted a public arts ordinance because this wonderful art is popping up all over town, but there's no clear process to get it approved or to have it vetted. So in general, I like the idea of having a flag ordinance. But the reason I voted to table it tonight is that I was upset that it's going so quickly and that you had a meeting at 5:30 before a 7 o'clock meeting, and I'm just a slow thinker, like, I need time to read it and kind of think about it for a while. And if you hand something to me that late, during budget season where I'm trying to keep all the budget stuff straight, I just don't have time to think about it. So for me, it's really a timing issue. I would like more time, especially, people are making suggestions as we speak, and I feel uncomfortable passing it when we're still making suggestions. So for me, it's more about slowing this process down and coming up with something that really works for everybody. Thank you.
One second. Council Sullivan?
I would just say, I think this is really more of a timing issue with somebody who's made these decisions. It's nice to have the policy in place, and I have made controversial decisions to fly the flag. When we first flew the Puerto Rican flag, that was not universally accepted as a good thing to do. There was a little mini protest across the street, but we did it, and we stood as a city and welcomed our neighbors in our, you know, to our community. They were, you know, an important part of our community, so that's happened. You know, the motion to table was only to move it till after July 1st, which I think even the makers of the motion said in hindsight, probably, timing on this was poor and probably should have waited a month. That's all the motion to table asked to do. And I do find it a little hypocritical, quite frankly, that the biggest complainers of the budget process that we have just had, which has been hugely transparent, open and publicly noticed, met an hour and a half before this meeting to pass this tonight. I'm sure the meeting was publicly noticed, I'm sure people had the opportunity to come if they wanted to, but there's a rush to judgment on that when we had a budget process with the same people that made this motion tonight complaining about public process, and that has been ignored in this particular case. So I support, I supported the motion to table, and I will not support a first reading tonight, while I would certainly support basically this ordinance as it is proposed, but I will vote no tonight.
Anybody else for the first time?
I think, no, I think it's the first. I've talked so much before, but somebody else wants to do it.
All right, so as far as the meetings, the meeting was posted on the 7th, and we did a lot of the work on the 7th. We immediately followed up with an email after that meeting to everybody on the city council to what was talked about. Then we scheduled a meeting for Monday that missed the deadline in the clerk's office, so it was rescheduled for this Thursday. There have been no significant changes since the email went out and tonight. Tonight's meeting was just among the three committee members to review it and say what the next steps are, all right? So that's that. It has nothing to do with, anything to do with city budget or me personally. Personally, I like to get things done when they're handed to me, and I like to do it the right way, and I've tried to do that. All right, I want to address a couple of Councilor Mello's claims. First, everybody has been invited to all these meetings. I never sent any emails telling people not to show up, I don't know what that's referring to. We also heard documents and heard testimony from them when they were at Park and Rec Commission. We listened to those things and included them in our planning. We had a letter written to us by an advocate representing the Pride community that included a lot of stuff. I talked on the telephone to a couple people in the Pride community who gave us some feedback on things that were in here, and we've included those. I've included Councilor Morgan Alley many times, even though he's not on the committee, we're able to talk to him and get his feedback on things. This was a very open, inclusive process, and I'm frankly offended by the people who say it wasn't open and inclusive, or that he or I or Councilor Alley are homophobic religious bigots, which has been said in public. That is absolutely not true, and it's definitely not appropriate language for people who are looking for openness and love, all right? As far as some of the flag comments go, historic flags are in here because there's a need and a want in the community for sometimes putting up historic flags. Defining what that means, everybody around this table probably has a different perception. The goal here was to give that discretion to the mayor. That's why it's written the way it is. The words "political division" is a way of describing a territory in the country, and that's a common English phrase to describe parts of the country, not whether we're Republicans or Democrats or independents. It has to do with the geography of the land, all right? The meetings, again, were posted. The K and L that you asked about, originally, we had K and L together where it said anybody can submit suggestions, so we had the city employees in the same pile as citizens. The lawyer suggested we separate that for a good reason, because city employees and staff and elected people, they have a direct pipeline to the mayor. We can send them an email and talk to them anytime we want. He wanted to make it clear that there was another process equally as valid for citizens and business owners. That's why they're separated. Anybody can make suggestions, but it's broken into two pieces to make that clear. The question about denials, we talked about the ability for Park and Rec to make decisions and say yes or no to things. In my personal experience with somebody who's been in Boy Scouts for several years, I've asked to put things on the green in advance of activities or to promote certain activities, like that big bottle and can drive we do every year. Park and Rec has told me, no, you can't do that, because you're not going to be standing there holding that thing, and we don't want to open the door for anybody and their brother to advertise on the green. So what we did as a group was we walked over to a great business in town and asked for permission, and they gave us permission. So now the big huge sign about the can drive is on one of our local retailers, and they're thrilled to it, we're thrilled with it, solved the problem. Councilor Morgan Alley had an issue, he wanted to put the childhood cancer flag or a banner up. His family is very committed to that cause, and again, he was told the same thing. You can have it while you're out there doing your event, but you can't leave it on city property for a long time. When I've had things at the green, I, you know, I rent or borrow the gazebo, because somebody has to, because we paid a fortune for it for my campaign events, but I can't leave my signs on there the day ahead or the day after, right? I'm there for a few hours, I have a few people stop by, I give them donuts and make them happy, and then I take my signs down. So there is a standard process for that stuff, and if you look at the code that's referenced here, Section 1172, you'll find that that describes what Park and Rec allows and doesn't allow. All this is doing is adding the flagpoles to that list, all right? As far as I know, the records are accurate. Councilor Mello put a public record request in asking when anybody had denied to hang a flag. Well, nobody's ever asked to hang a flag on the green. That's how this all came about. You can't get a record that doesn't exist, because nobody's ever asked for it. Most people in the community just assume those flagpoles were for American Well, nobody's ever asked to hang a flag on the green. That's how this all came about. You can't get a record that doesn't exist, because nobody's ever asked for it. Most people in the community just assume those flagpoles were for American flag, state flag, and city flag. Nobody's ever asked before. So this, it came to our attention, all right? There's no malice or bad intent here, all right? So I'm going to close by saying, so my motion is going to be, from the prevailing side, I'm going to reconsider the motion to table till July 1st, from the prevailing side, which will allow us to do it tonight. And I will change my vote, so we will have enough people to table till July 1st in deference to Counselor Mello and every other interested party here that wants to speak. Thank you.
Motion to table.
Motion to table by reconsideration.
Mr. President. I don't think that's something that we can, kind of.
No. I'm not going to.
Can we table it to a different date? Motion to table for reconsideration. Roll call, Madam Speaker.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 27, City Properties, Counsel Alley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Properties Committee met on June 7th and voted 2 to 0 to have item 27 remain in committee.
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Yes, let me correct. So this was to discuss the naming of the Main Street Rail Trail Bridge, and the possible naming of the Westfield Purple Heart Trail or incorporating that. First of all, I'd like to thank Kamel, and John, and Paul for being here tonight. I'd also like to thank the members of the Columbia Green Rail Trail Committee, who are present, or it was a Zoom meeting. And the City Properties Committee doesn't meet very often, and as we all know, we're running into the summer. We were trying to be responsive to this group, Don Wiggles, and they mentioned the items, all of these items, in a timely manner, otherwise they'd drag on forever. But just get the discussion going, that was the purpose of this. If we didn't meet, then basically it would be September and whatnot. So this was just to get, these are all discussion items. The friends have come up with some, and Paul came up with some great ideas and that sort of thing, and they agreed to take this on to themselves, meet with the Purple Heart Committee, and came up with some great ideas and offered a lot of these suggestions, which Paul reiterated tonight. And we thanked them, and so basically through the summer, that was the course, and I haven't had a chance to talk to them, they were going to meet with the Purple Heart, and some of the suggestions that Paul made tonight, and that sort of thing, and I commend them for it, and we will get it done in the right manner. We're trying to be accommodating to the needs of the citizens that are making requests, and not drag it out, and you know I've worked on ordinances sometimes for a year and a half, and the same thing with the group. So it's, so we'll be meeting and talking about that. So basically, this is going to remain in committee. Friends of the Columbia Green Rail Trail are actually taking the lead on this, and we're getting input and that sort of thing, and we'll go from there. But it was just to be responsive in all of these items, okay? Matter of fact, when we were handling these, because of the timeframe of July 1st, we were in Zoom, and we did post for a meeting, and it didn't get posted and that sort of thing, that's why I moved from Monday night, trust me, I did not want to be here at 5:30 tonight, okay?
This is staying in committee, correct?
This is staying in committee, so, right, so, okay, so anyways, that's where we're at with that, okay? Just wanted to clarify.
Counsel Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, I think this is parallel to the flag ordinance. We need an ordinance, a policy, to determine how bridges get named. I mean, it's not necessarily between the rail trail and the Purple Heart, I mean, there could be 10 other people who want a bridge named for a cause, and all very, you know, worthy causes, but I think we need a policy. Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks for starting, Scott.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. See ordinance 11-121 through 11-128, it's all about naming things in the city, it already exists, there's policies and procedures in place, so we're ready to go. Thank you.
No, I'll be really quick. No, I just want, I just want to thank the committee for their due diligence and the collaborative nature on this issue. I mean, you've got two, you know, two different opinions that came in, and I think you did a great job and you spent the time. And by the way, I never said that the meetings weren't posted properly or noticed properly.
Thank you.
Counsel Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge that our public participants tonight, thank you for being here and being so engaged, and the gentleman that left too, that's what we need, is more people to come out, whether it's just for naming a bridge, or they're sick of the potholes. We don't want to fill up the whole room all the time, because we'd be here till 1 o'clock in the morning, but thank you very much for being here.
Motion to stay in committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Item 28, Counsel Alley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the City Properties Committee met on June 7th, and by a 2 to 0 vote, voted to remain item 28 in committee.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? No.
Just real quick.
Seeing none. None. None.
These are the three committee members here, we don't need any discussion, we're good.
It's up to you, Counsel Alley.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that we are working with the Land Reuse Plan Advisory Group, and that will be through the summer and into the fall and that sort of thing, on this particular motion, so that's where that's at.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unfinished business, Madam Speaker.
There is none.
There seems like there's a lot of it. Motion's orders for resolution.
To come.
Item 29, Counsel Oniski.
Thank you, I'll keep this short, because it's a motion of Counsel Bean to send communication to the mayor, asking him to reconsider doing a fireworks celebration for the city of Westfield.
Second.
Quick, just a little bit of leeway here, this is something I just feel that we should be doing something maybe late in August. If it's not so much fireworks, it should be an event, it should be something around this, the city needs it, we need to get out there. There's 300, the 350 account has money in it, it's not something that we're going to have to find some significant funds to do, it's pretty simple, I was, it's just something that we probably shouldn't have kept with a little bit of planning, we could have had this done, so. And there's plenty of other communities out there doing something, so I just feel that we should be doing something in August if possible. Thank you.
Anything else? Madam Speaker. Counsel Morgan Alley.
Really getting lazy. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for wanting to throw a party for the city.
Thanks. One's that I might.
That's it.
Roll, or, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? On the hands of the mayor. Counsel Figgy.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion, a motion of Counselors Figgy and Adams to revise Section 2-256-C to allow the council on aging meetings to be held at the senior center, refer to Illinois legal.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Yes, it's been requested by the Council on Aging Board that they would like to be able to meet at the Council on Aging, at the senior center, and in order to do that, we need to change the ordinance to allow it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item 31, Counsel Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion of Counselors Matthews Kane, Bellchandy, and Figgy to add the additional umbrella name New Haven and North Hampton Canal Greenway to the current name of the Columbia Greenway Rail Trail, refer to city properties and law.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
They discussed it in public comment, it's not getting rid of the original name, it's just adding to it, it's like the Appalachian Trail has different sections, the Columbia Greenway Rail Trail will be a section of the larger New Haven and North Hampton Canal Greenway.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, this is a motion to send a request to the mayor to juggle some things in the budget, I don't want to go through every single line item, which I'm sure you'll all be thankful for, but basically, the ambulance fund could be used to pay for the benefits and any costs associated with having ambulance employees in that fund. It would free up about $1.1 million in the city budget if we do it as proposed without moving people to the fire department. If we move the five people to the fire department that Counsel Bean asked about the other night, it would save about $988,000 that we could use for other things in the city budget. However, it requires quite a bit of juggling, there's a lot of line items that have to be added and subtracted, but again, it's one of those things where, you know, it makes sense to do, if we can do it and come up with a creative way to free up some cash in the budget, this is a good thing. So I'd like to just send it to the mayor, we have, oh, by the way, $2.6 million in the ambulance fund right now that's unallocated in the current budget, so we can certainly afford to cover these things. So I'd just like to send it to the mayor, I've already talked to the mayor and to the auditor about this a couple times, they understand the process and what it would take, and again, I think it's a good thing, it's, you know, give us some more money for other things.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Counsel Sullivan.
I just, I'm going to go on record, is I actually don't think it's a good idea to do all of this, it's also an immediate consideration, and courtesy to a fellow counselor, I will not vote no on that, to kill it, because if it doesn't happen tonight, it's not going to happen in this budget, but I just want to go on record, is that I think it is ill-advised to do almost all of this motion, because you're just going to basically raid and bankrupt the ambulance account and take away any flexibility that that account has. So I will vote tonight, because out of courtesy, I will not kill it on an immediate consideration, but I'm just going on the record, is I will not support almost any of this if it comes back in as a budget initiative.
Anybody else for the first time? Counsel Flaherty?
Yep, no, thank you, and I appreciate that, and it is an immediate consideration because of the budget timeline and because of where we are, and it's one of the many solutions that I was looking at for certain things. I agree with you about putting pressure on the ambulance budget, but we already do this on other enterprise funds, you saw the other night when we had water and store in here, they already do this kind of thing. We've looked at this before and kind of given the ambulance group a pass, but it is a good